Franklin Shannon.
Good to go.
Shannon Nolan. Thirty-eight-year-old.
All right.
Police just found, he's my cousin.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. The meeting is called to order. As always, this meeting is being video-recorded. We will begin by taking a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. As always, for those of you out in Zoom world, if you would like to be recognized or have a question, please put your name and address in the Q and A. You're welcome to just put a question in the Q and A directly, or you can put your name and address if you'd like to be recognized to speak on one of the topics we're discussing this evening, and we'll consider, I will consider that request as we move through our agenda tonight. So this meeting is being held here, live and in person, on the second floor of the townhouse, and also being broadcast out via Zoom. Our first appointment is Police Chief Michelle Garette to discuss the K-9 program, to provide a department update, and to request us to authorize me to sign the fiscal year 22 state 911 department training grant application. Welcome, Chief.
Hi, good evening. It feels like a very long time since I've been standing here doing this. I'm not going to lie, I like this much better than Zoom.
So do I.
Before we get into the agenda item, I thought it would be best if I kind of gave an update and overview of the department and some of our staffing. We have done a couple of fun things this year. We implemented an entirely new policies and procedures manual for our officers. The policies are written consistent with our neighboring agencies, as well as the Massachusetts accreditation standards. Those policies went into effect, they were disseminated, trained on, and went into effect August 29th. So we feel pretty satisfied that we are in compliance with best state practices, as well as what we anticipate the police reform language to look like. So I think we're ahead of the game in that. The second thing I'd like to talk about is some training that we are going to be offering our officers in October. I am, you know, I think we, we look nationally at some of the issues facing policing, and mental health and mental illness are certainly issues facing policing right now. I think we saw that locally in a very tragic way. While we do in-service training on mental illness on a yearly basis, I wanted to do something that was a little more proactive, and really talked about the root causes of mental illness, how behaviors present themselves, and has a strong focus on de-escalation, as opposed to just enforcement or how the courts are involved. So really, just taking our role as enforcement officers and trying to reshape that into how do we help people to fix the issue going on at the incident at hand without enforcement becoming one of our next steps. So that will be scheduled for October. I have invited some of our neighboring agencies to attend as well, as we have the room in our facility to accommodate it. Staffing, as you know, on a national and specifically in state level, recruitment of officers has been a challenge this last year and a half, to say the least. When I started here, we had four officers who, prior to my arrival, had sought employment elsewhere. We were able to quickly fill those gaps. We've only had one officer leave since my tenure here. Four of our officers have been here for a year or completing their year, so they're coming off probation. I will say that their impact in the department has been significant. They brought some fresh life back in, and our traffic enforcement efforts are up, our activities are up almost 400%. So that's been a significant impact on the department. Our fifth officer coming in was delayed due to an injury he sustained in the police academy. He is now set to graduate his second academy, poor thing, had to do that fun twice, on October 4th, and he is starting with us on October 5th, and that's Officer Frank Tiss. Officer Stanley was deployed for military service for over a year, and then took a brief leave of absence upon his return. First, I want to thank him for his service, coming from a military family. I know what a sacrifice that is. But I also wanted to say that we are very happy to have him back, and he starts again with us tomorrow night, his first shift. So he'll have a brief field training refresher, just to kind of get him settled back in, and then he'll be back in our rotation. As you may or may not know, Sergeant Geary retired. With his total years of service, he completed 32 years, I believe, in law enforcement, and I saw him not, not that long ago. Retirement is suiting him well. Not that I'm looking to go anytime soon, but he did, did make it very tempting. We have two officers that will be joining us, are starting the academy in December. You'd already have done the conditional offers of employment for Daniel Neal and Joe Shaverdies, who you know was a dispatcher of ours, and we are very happy that he's back in our process. Their current start date is December, so I'll come before the board when it's appropriate to ask your permission for appointment. So, you know, for us, when we talk about recruiting issues, I just want to say, we're a small department. We've been able to bring in, with the addition of these two new people, eight people in two and a half years. So we are doing some things in the department that is making us attractive to candidates still. A lot of that has to do with the town itself, and I think as law enforcement officers looked on a national level or urban levels, they saw that a community like Medfield, it really does support their police, and I think it made coming to an organization like ours more appealing. So I just wanted the community to know that, that when we have their support, it lets us actually keep our staffing up and provide good services. So lastly, well, actually, we can do the formality of the 911 grant, and respectfully request that you sign off on our 911 grant, which covers all of our training for our officers to stay EMD certified.
Any questions on the grant application? Pete?
Not on the grant application, but I have questions.
Got some grant applications?
No.
All right. So you want to do the grant application, then?
I move that we, and who signs it?
I think I'm going to sign it.
Just you?
Yeah.
I move that we authorize the chairman to sign the 911 grant for the police department.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
Opposed? All right, passes. Thank you.
All right. Pete, if you have questions, before I move on to the other agenda item, I'm happy to answer them, or...
Okay, sure. The first has to do with the mental illness training and the, what you alluded to there. I have a history of 25 years involved with our community mental health agency in the area Riverside Community Care.
Yep.
I had suggested to Chief Meany that he try to partner with Riverside when there was a mental illness person, because Riverside runs a trauma center that will come to where the person in crisis is located. And I had tried to convince him to use Riverside to fulfill that function in Medfield, and he said he already had something else work, that worked.
I have to tell you, we use Riverside. We actually use them on a fairly consistent basis.
You just didn't tell me.
Yeah, they have been a wonderful partner for us. They coordinate very well with our officers to try and get out when they can, and speak to individuals, and assist our officers through the process of finding either suitable programs to direct people in, or on the rare occasion that we do have to section, section somebody to protect them from themselves, they've assisted us through that process. So that partnership has been working very well.
Good, glad to hear that. The second thing I wanted to ask you about was, you said the traffic enforcement was up 400%, and that's, is that the, the number of tickets? Or what, what's it, what's the 400%?
So, you know, and I'd spoken about this before, a money ticket rarely curbs behavior. It's a punitive action to be taken. So when we talk about traffic enforcement, we talk about our presence, our educating the public, that's by actually conducting the car stop and informing them what they've done wrong, what the correct behavior is. And then, you know, we have some discretion in terms of writing warnings or actual money tickets. So when I talk about our enforcement activities, I mean the kit and caboodle of it, which is how many posts do we do in a specific period of time, and how many motor vehicles do we stop? So COVID, we had recommendations down from Department of Public Health and EOPS that suggested we stop doing in-person stops unless they were egregious, until we kind of got a better grasp on how the disease was transmitted. Once we were vaccinated, we increased our, our activities and our motor vehicle stop, and I'll just give you a quick number, and they might be off by one or two. I think in, in the total year of 2020, we did 140 stops. In the first few months of 2021, we did 167. So we're on track for that. We've maintained that number.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gus?
If you have something else to cover, I actually just have a totally different topic, and it's a quick question, having to do with a gun range.
Okay.
So if you want me to, the only question I have, because we have a development committee tomorrow night, so I'm just curious, I think, based on information we have, is I believe the gun range is on state property?
Correct.
I think. But I also heard that you sort of manage the facility. So I'm just trying, at this point, I'm just trying to understand how the current gun range is running, because if we get into discussions about trying to figure out some way of changing or accommodating the developer, I'm just looking for the initial options.
And you're talking, guess what, the one up by the hospital?
The one up by the hospital, yeah.
Just for members of the public.
So just to fill that in for others, Trinity and their proposal to redevelop the hospital called out the current noise coming from the gun range, as it sounded like it was almost a show, you know, they made the proposal, but they kind of identified the current status as a showstopper. And I'm not implying that we need to move the gun range, I'm just looking for a way, I'm looking for options for what we could do if we needed to do something. And it occurs to me that there might be some options that would actually work out to everyone's advantage, but the first step is to be sure I know who actually owns a gun range and who's running it.
So in terms of managing the gun range, when we talk about managing it, it really has to do with maintaining the berms and, you know, the trailers that we house our, our shooting targets in, and some of our other equipment, by picking up the brass, cutting the lawn, and keeping the facility just still usable. Retired Officer Steven Grover does the bulk of that. He does some training for MPTC and some other organizations, and, you know, the, the good pro quo is that he uses the facility to assist in training other organizations, and then he maintains it for us and does a beautiful job with that. There are some changes that we can make to mitigate sound. We had a very unusual year where we had some big storms, a lot of leaves come down, and then people were home with COVID. So the noise did travel a bit more than it typically does, and then people were home to hear it. I will tell you that of the complaints we got, I would say 90% of them were Dover residents, that they were actually hearing the range more than our own residents were. And I understand it, and, you know, I am sympathetic to that. There are some modifications that are tactical in nature, and I'd rather not discuss, that we are making to our firearms to reduce the noise that they, that they transmit. But I think we have broad leeway in terms of how we let people use the range, what type of weaponry we let them qualify on, and things that we can mitigate the sound.
Where my head is going with this, and it's very preliminary, is actually not merely to put a burden on you all to mitigate. I'm, my head is going in the direction as though there are ways that that gun range could be improved, that would be, from an operational standpoint, would be an improvement, that would also happen to have an acoustic benefit with it. So my head isn't like, what can we do to make the problem go away? My head is actually going in the overall circumstances here. What could we do, what could the state do, you know, it's their facility, to actually make it a better range that acoustically is less intrusive? So I'm actually, till I get proven that I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm going in the direction of more aggressive, win-win on both sides. But I kind of needed to know who, who was turning the dials first.
If we, if we have control over it, basically, then certainly we can control the scheduling.
Absolutely. So, I mean, schedule modifications, weapon modifications, in terms of limiting the type and scope of weapons that are used, or times of training, are all real, simple fixes for us that can greatly improve.
I, I actually think this is a red herring issue from Trinity. I, I live next to the range, as close as the hospital, virtually, and, and you get used to it. You don't, it doesn't bother me anymore. I mean, in law school, I lived next to Brigham and Women's Hospital, and I didn't hear the ambulances when I left. So, I mean, the other thing that just occurs to me, as I'm sitting here, is that, I mean, we could build a berm for pretty low money, and, and that would be probably a sound barrier.
So just to cut to the chase where my completely, you know, non-constrained mind is going, the acoustic engineer they brought in initially, the, the report and their proposal called out the need for this 30-foot-high wall and enclosure, and virtually, basically said, well, the best thing would either be to put it underground or completely enclose it. And so it's like, well, would there be an advantage to the police to have an enclosed range? You know, they're not trying to figure out who's, it's a state facility, and we have some profit sharing that's built in here, and the state's not helping us out on some other aspects. So I'm just trying to figure out whether, whether there would be an option or a possibility of actually doing something that would address the acoustic issues that this developer's called out, whether there, I can under, I mean, the way it's written in the proposal, as it stands now, it sounded like it was a showstopper, but when we asked them, they fell short of saying, no, you have to enclose it or bury it. There was, you know, so there's room. I'm basically just trying to noodle through the possibilities of actually getting a better range for the police, perhaps that's more, you know, year round, that would deal with the acoustic issue, but also leave the police better off with what you have. And I don't, not knowing exactly how you're using it, what you're looking for to use it, I don't know whether that's even a smart idea or not, but indoor ranges, when I grew up in Seacock, they had an indoor range.
Yes.
And my guess is, they kind of liked it, because it's year-round.
We use ours year-round, as I trained in the rain, the downpouring rain last year, I believe.
Well, we could always put a sprinkler system in.
Yeah, I, I would hate to delve into an area for which I'm not experienced enough to talk in, in terms of true sound mitigation. I can tell you things where I've been at ranges, and things that we have learned or heard have made improvements. I think I'm a little more confident speaking about scheduling or firearm modifications
Okay.
than I would be talking to design features to mitigate sound.
My interest was in putting an idea out there, that I don't know if it's a good idea or not, but as opposed to everybody being worried about how defensively the reaction has to be, I'm sitting there trying to say, what if we were more aggressive about it?
It certainly sounds like the town has a lot of, a lot of control, so I hadn't realized that. I thought the state ran it. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that we run it, and that they might be very interested in doing what you'd ask them to do.
Mr. Masaro, can we ask you to use the microphone, please?
There's no video, so we only have audio going out right now, so.
The record will note that Mr. Masaro addressed, for lack of video.
I, I was just questioning as, as to, I believe that the, the property is under the control of the Department of Public Safety. They officially have responsibility for it. And I was, if there was a contact at Department of Public Safety, it might be nice if the town knew who they could talk to there. So I'm, I guess I'm asking if you have any idea who...
No, I'm sure we do have a liaison. I would say when the time is appropriate.
That's all.
Bill, I would guess that since DCAM didn't transfer anything to, to Department of Conservation and Recreation yet, that they, DCAM may still own it.
It's possible, but we'd certainly, Christine can talk in her next conversation with, but I suspect that you, you're still going to need to get Department of Public Safety involved at some point in this. And I would also point out that this is theoretically, this, not theoretically, but actually, is a site of former sewer beds for the hospital, and there's probably, what, 30 or 40 years' worth of lead downrange and everything else.
I couldn't say within that.
So I, I did have a conversation with Chief Meany last week, and the range was de-letted. It was just after, I believe, 2001.
Yeah, all of which, I mean, it just, these are just complications. I mean, it shouldn't stop the, the conversations. It also, I think, would help if you could convince the state that they were going to get more money as a result of it.
That's where I'm coming from, is another, another win-win where, where the state puts money into something, but they're, they're happy to do it because they wind up with something better.
It's got to be a chunk, it's got to be a reasonable chunk of money. I mean, ranges are very expensive. The, the real issues are the pollution, indoor air pollution, the control of the lead and everything else. I mean, that's, that's super expensive. And, and everybody is very much concerned, given the issues with masks and COVID and everything else, they've become more, I think, attuned to the risks of, of indoor air pollution as well. So, again, it's a complicated issue.
Plus, any, any money we spend on mitigation, the state will reimburse us half of it, so...
I was thinking more, I was thinking more getting the state to make an investment with whatever split they might get out of a successful redevelopment. That's where I was going.
Oh, we have other things to look at in that area, too.
Okay. Anything else on, on this, Gus? All right, Chief, your other item.
Okay. So the main topic tonight, when I became police chief, Officer Bonnades was married just a few months afterwards. He and I spoke as we were bringing on the K-9 program, and he had anticipated staying in town for a minimum of five years, which is what we had agreed on. Officer Bonnades, and I'm happy to say for him, he and his wife have decided to try and start a family, and as a result, they are moving back to Missouri, where she is originally from, and her family still resides. I appreciate, Chris had both the professionalism and decency to tell me of this several months ago, so that we could prepare, and he pushed off everything he could until we knew we were getting Frank Tiss in, so that we wouldn't have that kind of real loss for us. So I have the utmost respect for his professionalism with this topic. And on a personal level, I'm very happy for him that, you know, they are, they are taking this move together. That being said, we obviously have a trained K-9 that's currently with us. These dogs, this dog in particular is very valuable to the town. We've utilized the dog in a number of tracking situations for some narcotics use, and we've had actual rescues with his tracking ability. So I think the program itself has tremendous value here. The concern is the dog itself. The dogs are capable of being rehomed under certain circumstances, and a lot of times that depends on the temperament of the dog. But in great part, it depends on the ability of a trainer to establish that kind of dominance right away with the dog, and, and make that relationship work. As a small town and a new program, we don't have a second trainer that can take that, that responsibility. I do have an officer, Officer Ledbetter, who has the poise, determination, the common sense, and, and good, good sound thinking and judgment to do the position, and he is interested in doing it. But he's rather apprehensive about taking on a dog that might not be well-suited for him, because he's going to be a new trainer coming in. You know, while our purposes of the dog were not to have a dog that was overtly aggressive, because that's not what we needed for a town, we still had to train the dog in patrol function, and I think that Officer Ledbetter's concern is reasonable, and frankly, I share it. So what we looked at, what I looked at, is I spoke to the Stanton Grant first, because they are the ones who initially funded the program for us. Of course, they're disappointed. A dog typically has six to eight working years, and we're only a couple, couple and a half years in. But when we talked about the totality of the situation, as disappointed as they were, they agreed that this, what I'm proposing is the right move. So what I am proposing to the town is that we maintain the program, but that we start fresh together with a new dog and new trainer, and that we retire Harry to a safe environment, which in my estimation would be his current trainer, just because they, they've developed that bond. I do have sufficient funds left over from the Stanton Grant, the vested dog grant, and some private donations to do this again without any cost to the town. So I just think the valuable, the resource is there. I think it is the responsible and safe thing to retire the dog and start fresh, where we can have the trainer and dog develop their own relationship and maintain the program.
Okay. Pete, any questions?
Yes. Chief, could you please maybe talk about the cost benefits return to the town from having a K-9 versus the cost to the town, and what, how you think that plays out?
Yeah, so the, the initial costs in terms of the dog and the initial training would be covered under donation, so there's no outgoing cost in that. We do have some money left over that would accommodate maybe another year or so of medical care, so just routine vet visits, everything. The vehicle has already been transformed into a K-9 vehicle, so there's no additional cost there.
Does, does, does having one of your vehicles as a K-9 unit, does that affect your ability to put police on the street? Because that probably can't be used for other things quite as easily.
The only thing it can't be used for is transports. So we have to have a secondary officer provide any transport of a subject under arrest.
All right, and so that's not a problem, then?
That's not a problem. The, when you talk about the cost benefit, I will tell you that when we do a search, and we do many of them here in town, whether it's Noon Hill, over at the state hospital, Rocky Woods, we're talking about, you know, people wandering off, the dog alone, and our relationship with the other K-9 units in the area, one dog can replace 20 officers searching. It speeds things up. Our last search and rescue was less than 12 minutes, the dog tracked the individual, so...
Can you just let maybe residents know how many searches you do a year on average? Is it a dozen? Is it 100?
You know, I'd have to, I don't have that data. I can tell you, just from listening to the radio, we're doing at least three or four a month.
Oh, wow. Okay, that's a lot more than I would have thought.
And those are just searches for missing people. If we have, we have also utilized the dog. If we have an alarm bell, and there appears to be either forced entry or some entry into the house, it's much safer for us, for an officer safety perspective, to have our officers remain on the perimeter and allow the dog and the handler to go in the house, and we have done that multiple times. So there are some benefits, even just from an officer's safety standpoint.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and believe me, I understand the dog is not a tool, it's not a car, it's not interchangeable, but when you're talking about it, opposed to officer life and safety, it's, it's a tool we use.
Anything else?
Well, just the last thing. I really liked Harry, so I had to see him go.
I'll tell you a little, it'll make you laugh. When we first got Harry, I went over to pet him, and he took a pretty good little nip at me. And the only thing I said to him is, my boy, if there's one person in this building, you can't bite.
Never bit you again. I met him at the post office, he was exceedingly friendly.
Yes.
But he was still a puppy at that point.
Gus?
Just, just an observation. When you first introduced the idea of having a K-9 unit when shortly after you became chief, I heard that and interpreted it as, well, it would be a nice, it was a morale builder, it's kind of, I checked it off, okay, if it's going to make people in the department happier, it's, it's a morale builder. Last, I think it was, was it May that we had the gathering over by the church on Sunday, and that was right after one of the searches on Noon Hill, and you and I talked briefly, and, and talking about how quickly that lost person was found, that was, for me at least, the point where all of a sudden it was like, gosh, I just kind of thought it would be a fun thing to have as a morale boost. I had underestimated the significance of having a dog in a town like this to deal with situations like that. So it seems to me that the, the concept has already proven itself pretty thoroughly. It is maybe too bad that we're not getting the full years of service out of the dog we started with, but I'm inclined to accept your recommendation.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Gus on this. I think it makes good sense. I don't think there's any reason to take a chance on trying to retrain the dog with a new trainer. I think that particularly, there's no major downside to a new dog. I think it makes good sense as well, from a, a safety and perspective. So I think it sounds like a good idea. What's the timeline for this? I mean, how long will it take to train the dog and have a new dog lined up?
What I would like to see is Officer Tiss come off of his field training, so that we have a good complement of officers in the rotation. I'd be looking maybe if the program is doing a start date in November, and they have a dog available that we try and start in November. If we have to push it to the first of the year, typically anywhere from 10 to 14 weeks of training.
Okay. And will that, is that training full-time for Officer Ledbetter during that time, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief, do we share the K-9 officer with surrounding towns that don't have a K-9?
For mutual aid, yes, we will. We share with them, as well as if Metro Leck has a call and they're making requests for K-9s, we'll send the dog out for that, too. K-9s, we'll send the dog out for that, too. All of the, not only is it good for us in, in agency perspective, but it's good for the dog because that's the additional training the dog goes through responding to calls.
Great. Anything else?
No.
We don't need any official action on that.
No official action.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for coming in.
Thanks, chief.
I'm going to ask if we can just take a quick two-minute break. We're going to set up the Owl camera so that we can link with Medfield TV and get some video out to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, for a quick, for a minute?
Yeah.
Don't go away, we'll be right back. We're back on video and audio, and we welcome Bill Harvey, Chair of the Board of Water and Sewage, to discuss PFAS. Welcome, Bill.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was invited here.
You're just here to answer questions. All right, so, well, I'll, I'll kick this off, and I didn't know if you had a presentation to start.
No.
Christine, if you want to chime in. I don't know if we need to promote, I saw Mo was.
Mo's here.
In Zoom world as well. Do we want to promote him as well, or?
Yes, I've lost all my control, so you'll have to.
So if we could promote Mo as well?
Bill, just for the audio, uh, video, can I actually ask you just to sit at the table rather than?
Sit at the table, sure.
I'll go that way.
Hi, Mo.
Hi, Mo.
Hi, hello.
Can you hear us, Mo?
I can.
Very good. All right, so I'll just kick off a little preliminary here, and then, Peter, Gus, to the extent you have questions, you'll go as well. So I had asked Christine to put this on the agenda. Obviously, there's been a lot of PFAS-related discussion in the media, among legislators, among everybody else. We've been doing the testing and so far passing, which has been good. A lot of towns haven't. And so the, the, the time urgency is the fact that we're doing this water project, we're doing this filtration project, putting in the treatment plant for wells three and four, and we also have the ARPA funds available. One of the eligible uses for the ARPA funds is for water infrastructure. And so I wanted to have a discussion about using some of those funds to modify the plant, add an additional filter to deal with the PFAS issue so that it's out of the way, at least as the wells three and four, recognizing that there's four other wells in town that we may have to deal with at some point. Because it seemed, it just seemed to me, from my uneducated perspective, that it would be cheaper to do it now as part of this project than potentially being forced to do it. Because as I see the issue, there's kind of two pieces to the issue. One is sort of the pure, what I'd call the scientific question, which is, how dangerous is this? What problems does it cause? What, what is the research going to tell us about the safe levels and all the rest of it? So there's the scientific question of, of how much of this do we have to get out of the water? How much of it is in there? How much do we have to get out? Do we have to get all of it out? And then the second question is, which is partially related to the first, but not entirely, is kind of the political and regulatory question, is how seriously are the people who can tell us to do things going to take the scientific question? How, what level of risk tolerance are they going to have? There's a reason that you find a lot of products that say on those products that there are various findings that have been made by the state of California, because the state of California has adopted a view of whatever the big question is, that is not necessarily shared by other, you know, US or international regulatory agencies. And so the second question is, given all the discussion about this and the concern about it, regardless of the answer to the scientific question, what is the risk that we're going to be told that we essentially, we have to filter for this? And I know that some towns, over the course of the last six to 12 months, as this has become a more pressing issue in some communities, have started to add filtration, they've added tanks, they've added.
Sure.
Stuff to their treatment plants. That, that was the, my agenda item to talk about, but Peter, Gus, if, if you have questions or preliminaries, then we can discuss.
I think it would be helpful to get up on the screen for the residents at home the PFAS testing results that were in the agenda for the packet.
Can that be done, or no?
Go to the town's website, and then go to that.
It's in the packet. So if you have the packet, and it's about the fifth page in of the packet for those at home, if we can, if it's, if you easily can put it up there, we can.
Do you want me to try to share my screen?
Well, why don't you let Nick, Nick do it?
Okay.
Because he's in charge of the Owl. Go ahead.
Sure, so.
Gus, do you have any other preliminaries, or?
Uh, no.
Okay.
So PFAS, for maybe, for most people, everyone's background, is a family of, of chemicals that actually has been in use for some time, probably the 1940s. Maybe its original use was in for some fire suppression, but is actually in a lot of consumer products today. It's, it's a family of chemicals that, I think there are about 600 of them still being used today. They have, they bring a variety of characteristics to solids, to fibers, and things like that for resisting water permeability, just so things don't stick. So it's, it's a case where these particular chemicals have been in use for a long time, and people have been exposed to them. And actually, the, you know, even the Massachusetts DEP, you know, it admits that most consumers' contact with this family of chemicals are actually through consumer products and actually not water itself. But the Massachusetts is, is, has vectored into, you know, managing the exposure of these family of chemicals through, through water, and that's what, what they're doing. So the US EPA has not created maximum contaminant, actionable maximum contaminant limits on a federal level. There's still a lot of dialogue that's happening within the industry and as well as public utilities. I was reading, you know, testimony to Senate Committee of Environmental and Public Works just as recently as, as June 9th. So what the, what the US EPA does on, on a federal level, I think is still forthcoming. The, the health aspects of it, from my, my, my research, is that, you know, by and large, there is, there is a tendency for some of these chemicals to elevate people's cholesterol level, and then some of the other findings are, are less sure, whether in toxicology or endocrine disruptors. So some of that research still is sort of forthcoming and doesn't really have the, the concrete weight in order for the US EPA to have maximum contaminant levels to be basically promulgated through all the states. But that doesn't stop individual states from doing what they want to do. And Massachusetts is one of six states that actually have promulgated a type of, you know, enforceable limit for this family of chemicals. So, and what, the way Massachusetts has gone about it is that they've picked out six, and you test for six, and then you take the sum of that reading, and they don't want it to be greater than 20, because that's really where it becomes really sort of, that's, that's really the action level.
That's 20 parts per trillion.
Parts per trillion. And in my experience, that's, that's really low, really for anything, not just to, that it's effective on something, but actually to measure it, so.
Isn't there also a national standard established for this as well?
No, no. For, there are standards for how something should be tested. Like if you send something, if you send a water sample to a lab, there is, I think there's an ASTM standard for, if you're going to look for this, these are, this is the methodology to test for it, but not a standard for what it should be, an action level from the, from the US EPA. So, and when you, when you look at how Massachusetts has sort of racked and stacked with the six states who have created a limit, I believe that Massachusetts is probably the most stringent because the other states have individual actions for limits that are 15, 20, 40, 70 for, for each, for, for each of these. And as you can see, if we're taking six of them and we're summing them and the limit is, is 20, that's, 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 that's pretty low. But I don't, that's what our, that's what the Massachusetts DEP has, has decided to do. So that's just roughly on a toxic, in toxicology, you know, 101. And that's, that's, some of that I'm just reading from the Massachusetts DEP website. The US EPA test, I'm sorry, American Water Works Association testimony to the Senate Committee on Environmental and Public Works, and what are some of my other sources, American Membrane Test Technology Association. So as it pertains to, you know, Medfield, we began testing in, in January, and actually a lot of communities started testing right around that time. So there was a big ramp up of a lot of these samples that were being sent out to labs. And so there's, there's a, sort of a new cottage industry in a way for testing specifically for, for these, for these items. So when we look at, we look at the matrix that's up here, and you look at the, the water sources and the way that the sampling, you can see that the, the one that probably has the, the lowest detection and response is, is well number four. Sort of right behind it is well number six. Well, well number three has moved from measurable to, on the last couple have been non-detect. And the, the one that probably more consistently has a elevated level is, is wells two and three. So.
One and two.
I'm sorry, one and two, right. Thank you. So from a, you know, if we're, if, what is, what is our risk and what is, what is the trend? I would say that, you know, just by looking at the data that's on the screen, you know, one and two is the, are the wells that we really need to keep our eyes on. Those are the, once we get above 20, that's going to be something for us to, there's going to be some activity on that. For three and four, it's not, it's not apparent that there is something that's actionable, especially within the last, you know, within the last six sampling times. Now, the facility itself for well three and four, what we, we, we knew that, that the state was going to promulgate the testing as well as the actionable limits. We knew that coming into this project. So our approach was to make sure that we had a building that if we had to put in a different technology, that we had a length of pipe, and we could basically sort of break it and put in a T and then have a, a different filter, and it would probably be adding on to that building and put in another filter there. So we made sure that we didn't have all the pipes and valves all jumbled up, or we couldn't easily, you know, splice into there and, and create treatment. So for, for these sort of constituents, the, the, the plant that we're putting in is not going to, not that I know of, is, is going to filter that. The generally accepted treatment technologies are absorption through activated carbon. Others is, it's a type of absorption called ion exchange, and there's a third method that uses a membrane, but it tends to have a very, has a very, it cleans the water well, but it does generate a, a large volume of water, whereas the other ones that absorb, you actually have to absorb it, and you don't do any work here. You actually take the media out, and it has to go somewhere else for, for processing and for ultimate disposal. So what's interesting with, with this is that, you know, the state is, is basically enforcing, you know, forcing towns to, to have treatment for elevated levels. The things that, questions that haven't been answered as an entire industry is, is to make sure that the, the towns do not have liability in the, the handling and the transport of this media as it leaves the site, and that ultimately, those that are responsible for generating this, the, the, these, these compounds are responsible for the ultimate disposal and sunsetting of the liability. So there's, it, it's, but when you get back to like, you know, from a, you know, a, an exposure point of view, people get more exposure from, you know, the foods that they eat because of packaging and the, whether it's the popcorn and it's from the microwave oven, there are a lot of places that these compounds do come from. But that doesn't, that, that doesn't mean very much to the, to Massachusetts DEP, you know, with their, their, you know, their forcing where they're, where they believe is important to, to enforce. And like I said, they, they've selected a certain testing methodology, a way of summing it, and then a way of, of, of looking at it, whereas in some other states, they have a, you know, they specify specific one of, of these, these 12 or 20 compounds out of this matrix, decided to, to look at them individually.
Okay.
But like, if I finish the thought, so when we look at the, the funds that could be possibly made available to this, I think that, well, first of all, we still have more data to collect on this. We've, we've collected less than a year of data from all of our, 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 our sources. I think that, not just as a public works, but as an engineering community, to understand the, the data analysis and the variation of the numbers, you know, statistically, and is something that the industry is going to be learning, and then, you know, we, we just need a larger sample size. And I think the fact that our numbers are lower gives us the time and the opportunity to generate, you know, more of that data for something that's actionable. But however, you know, we just need a larger sample size. And I think the fact that our numbers are lower gives us the time and the opportunity to generate, you know, more of that data for something that's actionable. But however, you know, you just look at wells one and two, you say, well, if we're going to need to have some sort of treatment somewhere, it will most likely be at well one and two first, and the data is close to something. So I think that if we were going to, you know, the beginning of a project like this would require some study, you know, we would to scope out, you know, the existing infrastructure, the wells, you know, is there another place to put them? Can we avoid treatment? Can we drill test wells? Can we, you know, within that area there, can we redevelop them so that there may be, that we don't, we find a place in the aquifer where this does not present itself? So I think there would be some engineering services that where we can use this, and also, but if it, in the end, if it does lead to somewhere we need treatment, then it will be engineering services actually to do design of the plant. And that's probably where the money would be spent, I think in the spirit of this, this has to be spent by 2024.
Correct.
Is that what it is? Yeah, so when you think about it here, we're in '21, we got, you know, finish off the year when we start coming into 2022, I think that's where we would probably begin to start, even from a preliminary point of view, you know, an engineering study of a, whatever, it's $80,000 to $120,000 to do an assessment of the data and help us create a path going forward for that. For actually preliminary engineering for a filtration plant probably runs between $300,000 and $400,000 to do preliminary design and then detailed design. I think from this plant was probably on the order of $800,000 or a million dollars for the well three and four plant, which is redeveloping three and four and a treatment plant and a much bigger thing where I think this is, these wells are lower in their yield. And, but, you know, I think, you know, where the money would be sent probably be the engineering services in the beginning part of the project, you know, when you look at through calendar 2024.
What would it cost? I appreciate all of that, but as I understand it, that if, once this treatment facility is built, that wells three and four will be able to carry a pretty hefty burden of our water supply if necessary, right? I mean, I think when we were going through this process, the number was like 50%, right, this could provide 20% of our water from those two.
From a permitting perspective, it's probably a little bit less, but from an instantaneous, you turn it on, it's going to be basically the same capacity as well, number six.
Right, and so, I mean, it seems to me, I get what you're saying entirely, the numbers are the worst on wells one and two, but it also seemed to me that it would be probably cheaper from an engineering perspective to incorporate this into the facility we're building now, which would then give us some insurance, not only against the potential for, obviously because water moves, and so the PFAS or whatever's in there is probably coming from someplace other than directly under it, right? So, I mean, that you could then essentially, if, you know, well one and two are close to that number, and if they go over that number and we can't use well one and two for one period of time, you'd then be, have pretty good assurance that you could use three and four. That you'd have the new facility, you'd have the PFAS element to it, and then if you had to close one and two for a period of time, because the state told you you had to, you'd have three and four, we're kind of ready to go.
Well, so I guess if I read your message right, is that?
We'll see a question, that's just what I'm kind of.
Well, no, but it's more like a, if we can provide, you know, basically 100% assurance of well three and four is the angle of that, so that if something becomes actionable on one and two, then we'll deal with it at its time. But we will, if it, well one and two do become higher, then we, that will have to become actionable for us to continue to use them.
I mean, it seems like we're closer to being able to have a PFAS filter, for lack of a better term, on well three and four than we are on one and two.
Could I make it a point here?
You can make as many points as you'd like, Mo.
Are you ready, Mo?
I forgot, we have the chart up on the screen, so we don't see you, so I apologize. Yes, please jump in.
No. So a lot of, a lot of what Bill's talking about is, you know, I agree with one and two being, you know, having the, you know, a lot of the issues with, you know, being close to the MCL, which we're still low, and 20 is a very low number in the industry. Like Bill said, you know, there's 70 parts per trillion. It is no federal standard, but Mass DEP with our state is one of the strictest, which is good in a sense, but I think right now, three and four, when it was designed, the feasibility study for three and four was already looked into with a conceptual idea of what it can do, what it needs to do if we did have an issue with three and four. One and two and six, even though six has been very low through the whole, from the beginning, one and two has been, you know, climbing and close to the MCL, but we don't have a feasibility study for those three wells. I think the, with a feasibility study, just looking at, this is kind of compared to Wellesley. The town of Wellesley has similar issues with their PFAS. They're over the limit, we're not, but as far as a feasibility study, that would include a conceptual design as well as cost estimates. It would cost about $65,000 if you were to encompass wells one, two, and six in this study. And the study would look at different options as, do we have enough room on the site? Is there enough issue, you know, where do we put these filtration systems? How big are they going to be? All those things can be answered in this feasibility study, but I think one, two, and six for the feasibility study would make sense. Three and four, if you wanted to put in, it would be from the preliminary and final design to construction in three and four. You're right, it's cheaper only to the sense that it's, the feasibility study has already been accomplished.
I mean, conceivably, though, could you do it via a change order to our existing?
We, yeah, absolutely. In a way, the short answer is yes, but if in effect there, it turns out that it's really not in three and four, having the filter in three and four is not going to help you with the site at one and two, because you really need to have treatment the way ours infrastructure is set up, where it's coming out of the ground. So, you know, one and two are down, you know, basically down 109, almost on the, almost on the Charles River area. So to get that water all the way up to, you know, you know, you know, deep behind, you know, Wheelock, you know, to have it treated up there, I think, I think it would cost more to get the water there than that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting that, I mean, kind of what I'm thinking about is, if you added this to three and four, it seems to me if one and two stay under 20, then we're kind of good until, I'm assuming at some point, as part of the ordinary water infrastructure, this is something we're going to have to add. I'm just thinking that this is, whether it's through state standards, federal standards, what have you, at some point, we're going to have to filter for this and have to get it under some other number, have some greater assurance than just kind of hoping that, again, wherever 30 miles away this is originating and finding its way over here, that it continues in that vein. So my assumption is that we're going to have to do it at some point. And the question is, are we going to have to do it? Can we do it as part of our ordinary water infrastructure with exactly what we did on this treatment facility, the feasibility study, the preliminary design, the cost, planning it in and all the rest of it, versus having to do it on a very short notice? And it just seems to me that if one and two, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mo or Bill, if one or two go over that 20 for some period of time, we'll have to stop using them. Is that fair?
We would have to make, we would have to make adjustments to it right away, whether it's to shut the wells down probably first and then have a plan in place, so.
And what I'm wondering is if we shut it down, one and two, and the treatment facility on three and four were built, could we supply the water the town needs from three, four, and six?
We could, but we also are limited in our permit for a period of time. You know, I don't know how long DEP would allow us to do that, but one and two, having the flexibility of all five wells, I think what I would like to see, I mean, and my personal opinion would be to at least have the feasibility study done for one, two, and six, and then decide whether or not to do three and four actual construction at this time.
So what's the window for making a decision on three and four? Like, when could we decide, tell them without incurring a substantial amount of additional costs? I agree with you entirely on the feasibility study for one, two, and six. When, you know, when is the sort of drop dead date for being able to say?
So I'm guessing that that horse has left the barn, that it's too late to save any money on engineering on three and four at this point.
They, so the building was engineered so that if we do have to bump out, so to speak, the treatment plant, that the plant can accept that, so we're not doing a lot of, doing a lot of, you know, repiping and.
But there's no savings, Bill, between doing the engineering today versus doing it 10 years from now if we need to do it in 10 years, is there?
I don't believe that there will be savings.
Well, the engineering is already done.
Actually, because it could be the antithesis, where we build something for three and four and it sits idle until the data comes up.
What's the point of spending money to build it if we're not going to use it?
Eight months later, we have to do, we have to pivot and then deal with one and two. So I don't, I don't believe that there is a, any horse to let out of, I don't think, believe there's a horse or a barn here, because this retrofit could be done after the building is completely commissioned. That's the way it was, that's the way it was designed.
For me, the horse getting out of the barn is, if you had included this in the engineering at the very outset, there might have been a marginal cost that would have been some savings to the town, but at this point, I don't think there's going to be any savings to do it today or do it in 10 years if you need it.
Yeah, I mean, like, so, behind this, the question is probably, what is, what would this cost at well three and four to integrate in sometime in the future? It's probably on the order of, you know, between, you know, engineering, construction, the filters and all that, probably the order of, I don't know, two and a half million, three million, something like that. So whether we're spending that now or we're spending that, you know, sometime in the future.
Well, and the data says that we don't need it now, so I wouldn't see why we would spend it.
It would be hard to, in a way, it would be hard to have that discussion with our ratepayers that we're putting in a treatment plant for something that we might need, but meanwhile, the other part of infrastructure is looking kind of, you know, warm, that we probably need to spend more, spend the time, you know, and money on that. And that's, you know, the actually availability of treatment at one and two from a site perspective. I think that, I think that's probably the more, most interesting thing that would come from this report, really.
Bill, can I back you up for a minute? The, you said you had testimony there, Mike, you started off, I say, one of the things you did was the science dimension. Massachusetts has the tightest standards of any state, you know, of the other state, and by a long shot, if the other states had that kind of standard for each of six things rather than the cumulative. In the testimony you've seen, what's the science that Massachusetts used to get to the 20 parts per trillion?
I know there's a, there's a part of the DEP website that goes through their whole chronology of how they kind of came to this. I just didn't, I just ran out of time reading it. I was going to read it, but.
Let me be blunt, or what my real question is, was the 20 part? See, and you may not be able to answer it, because maybe it's in the website or maybe it's not, but when one state goes to that extreme versus everybody else, what comes to mind for me is to what extent was DEP driven by political considerations to get to that versus actually sound science?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, Massachusetts does have, you know, for example, manganese itself, there are, you know, there's like less than a quarter of the states have an enforceable limit for manganese. Massachusetts is one of them. So the fact that Massachusetts has a, probably the most stringent standard here, it's not, I'm not surprised by it, because, you know, that is, they've shown that in other places they are more stringent before, so.
So the reason I'm asking that question is we're debating whether or not it would make sense to proactively put in place controls in wells that, based on this chart at least, show no, even with the stringent standards, show no particular, you know, danger of exceeding that standard. If in fact, the fact, you know, if there was solid science that said, yeah, when you let it get above that 20 parts per trillion, you're really exposing your population to true demonstrated health hazards, and we can't believe that the other 49 states are being so stupid. If that's what we were dealing with, I would see us look at it one way in terms of, well, maybe nobody else understands this, but we want to protect our citizenry. If though, instead, it was driven as much by politics and philosophy as it was science, contemplating putting a lot of money into something which is really a function of a political dynamic and doesn't, at least with what we know now, truly represent any kind of health hazard, real health hazard to people, that makes me think about this differently.
Well.
Mo, you want to be heard on this? Yeah, go ahead, Mo.
Right now, there are other states that have, you know, equal to our standard, but there's a variety of different states that, if they have to be at 20 parts per trillion, they may not have the PFAS 6, they may not have one or two of the PFAS components. There's thousands of compounds in PFAS. There are other states that are used at 70. So we're not the, we're one of the highest, we're not the only ones that have to deal with that as well.
And Mo, do you have any sense of the science behind those standards?
Like Bill says, on the website, but, you know, it's not, you know, we're regulated by DEP just for all our, you know, contaminants, we don't have a choice in that. But as far as, you know, looking at these wells, I think one and two being the closest to 20, they feel 20 is the breakpoint where, you know, it becomes an issue after 20. That's their recommendation, that's where they brought the MCL, and that's what we have to follow as a public water system. The wells one and two being at 19, 19.1, and the last two, I mean, we can look and see what August is coming up pretty soon for the results there to see where we're at. You know, if we're going to put the money towards something in construction, that I would like to see those wells be addressed first, and then look into the, you know, with the non-detects, I mean, non-detect is, you know, it's below what they can measure out there. And right now, six being at 4.9, and non-detect in three, four, one and two seems to be the only ones that are questionable at this time.
Mo or Bill, I mean, how big of a sample size is six months of testing in for this type of thing?
I, I think, I think if we come back, we come back here in January, I think we'll have, we'll have a year, and I think we'll have possibly a different conversation, I think.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I don't think we have a year, I don't think you can come back in January. If the next month is 20, then DEP is going to expect us to take action immediately. I don't think we can wait till January to start, to begin that study.
Yeah, that's set aside, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So the way this works.
That's an immediate thing.
The way this works for the averages, we would have to hit somewhere around 23 to get to the 20. It's a three-month average for the quarter. So if we hit 20, it doesn't mean that we're at 20, it'll take into consideration, you know, the three months in that quarter, so 19.1, 19 averaged in with 22, 23 to get to that 20. So we would have to hit 23 to get there.
Yeah, and I certainly understand the other issue here with the cost is time, right? I mean, this is not, I would imagine you can't put in one of these things in a week. So when we say we have to immediately take action, we're probably not going to be able to build a treatment facility in a week. And so we have to build.
They're not treating it as a, they're expecting something to be turned on, because, you know, let's also recall that people have been, people have been consuming this through their food products and through water products for the better part of 40 years. So they understand that there are a number of towns that, once they've set the bar at 20, that it's actionable, you know, across all the towns. So, you know, there are engineers to hire, there, you know, there's, you know, shovels to get started, you know, there's filters to be built, it's got to take time.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm trying to understand is, I mean, where, let's say this does change, and I guess I don't, I guess the answer is you don't really. this does change, I guess I don't, I guess the answer is you don't really know. I mean, so you think one year is a good sample size? What percentage of wells that test as non-detect will exceed that 20 parts per million within a year of being non-detect? How stable are these numbers?
That's what I think the data will show us.
No, I'm not talking about just here, I'm talking about just generally. I mean, there's, in anything you're measuring, there's always a question of how stable something is. And so in the whole world of testing for these things, how stable are these numbers in water?
I, I think you have to look at as a town, how do we want to approach this? Do we want to eliminate the PFAS from our water through filtration? Or do we want to, you know, just keep it on status quo where it's under, under 20, where we're still not in any kind of, you know, we're still under regulations?
And Mike, I would just add that I believe if you look back, Mo, at our history, we, we had been testing for this before January, but we were at a higher level. So I don't think we have, we don't have the history on our own wells going back beyond just when we started.
We've, we've always been non-detect in, in any PFAS that we've tested before this MCL went down to 20.
So by definition, this is a man-made chemical. It's not occurring naturally.
Correct.
So it has to have a source. And a lot of the communities are experiencing higher levels is because they've had some contaminated sources being drawn into the aquifers of one or more.
Well, it's, it's, it's become an omnipresent compound. It's part of the ecosystem as we've made it. It's become circulated through, you know, paper wrappers that decompose and blow in the wind. It's become, it's not just the fire retardants that they, that they, if you go to a website, a lot of times they show a guy, a firefighter at a, at an airport. And by and large, on a, on a poundage basis, it's actually more omnip, these, there are many more chemicals and they're used through a lot of parts of the, of the ecosystem of the earth right now. So, and the reason why, you know, at these trace levels, that what you'll hear, this term called forever chemicals, because they really are, are hard to break down through, you know, natural, you know, environmental challenges. So that's why, that's why, well, they're called forever chemicals. I don't know if that's really true, but.
They don't break down.
They don't break down easily and through, you know, through any person's lifetime, they, they will be around.
And so from a macroeconomic standpoint, if your first point was true, that the actual exposure to PFAS has more to do with packaging and what people eat, what we're doing here from an economic standpoint is we're focusing with an extremely small, tight standard on an aspect of the environment where it's not a major contributor. In essence, we're finding a way to spend a, if what you're saying is true, we're spending a lot, finding a way to spend a lot of money to address a minor factor without actually addressing the major factors that will actually, if there's damage to be done, it will be the major factors that will do more damage than the minor factor that we're focused on here.
It, that's, it's a mixed, that's sort of a hot mix of science and politics. I'm not exactly sure, which I think is your, you know, which is right in your strike zone, right?
That's where I started.
So I.
A lot of these, a lot of these major companies are being restricted to, to not to use any of those chemicals in any of their packaging or any of the Gore-Tex or waterproofing material. So it's, it's being eliminated from that standpoint, but whatever's still existing that's in our water, that's what we're, we're fighting against.
But all it takes, though, is one trial in one place where one plaintiff persuades one jury with one medical expert that, that whatever disease they have was caused by this, and then you're off to the races. The same things you're saying about, about, and again, I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, the same thing you're saying about that can be said about any number of chemicals and other things that were banned.
Exactly.
And then turned out 30 years later, oh, well, gee, actually, it didn't actually do any of those things, right?
Right.
So I, that's why I set it up upfront, there's the scientific piece of it and then the regulatory piece of it.
Yeah.
And I am more concerned about the regulatory piece of it, but the regulatory piece of it is a reality in that we can be told we have to filter for this. And so if what you're telling me is that it would be equally cost effective to add on to this treatment facility in 10 years as opposed to when there's a construction crew there now working on it, then, and the risk then is that the wells are shut down, right? I mean, they could, they conceivably, one of the orders we could get is that you cannot use the water from those wells, right? And so when you talk about the ratepayers, one thing you may have to say to them is, well, okay, for the next six to nine months, we're just not going to have water because we have to put in this filtration system, right?
From wells one and two, but from three and four testing below that.
Well, but again, I, I need to hear more about how stable these numbers are.
Sure, right.
Particularly when you're saying you don't know where they're coming from. If you don't know where they're coming from, you don't necessarily know where they're coming from. And so it may just be that, that haven't gotten to wells three and four yet, right? That wherever this is coming from is 60 miles away, and it's going to work its way down through the water, right? And then be there.
Or it's from, from the other parts.
It's a question of being proactive.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is that we.
Big Mac wrapper that's floating around, that's decomposing and.
I get it, and that's my concern, is that I don't want us to be too sanguine about the notion that this is non-detect now when you're dealing with a dynamic environment.
Right.
In the sense that it's not, this is not like a, I'm trying to think of a good example. It's not like this is a contaminant that came from one thing that's located in one spot.
We went through this with wells one and two with TCE.
That's right, that's right. So you had, you had volatile, you had, you had volatile, you had chemicals that it turns out that you can strip them out just by blowing air through them and capturing that way. And we monitor, you know, Mo tests for a number of things, you know, trihalomethanes and other things which are, you know, which are compounds that are, are byproducts of man-made chemicals that, you know, we are suspected carcinogens. So there's, there's a list of a whole bunch of things that we, that, that the town has to test for, that there are, that there, there are limits on. And, you know, as Mark, you know, mentioned before, you know, we had to do something for those, you know, wells once before, and it turned out to be, you know, a transient, you know, situation where we didn't.
It was a pool that passed, and we then stuck with it, so.
Yeah.
If it would be helpful, I can talk to our engineers to see what the cost difference is to be proactive now of putting something into wells three and four versus waiting, you know, years from now when we have a problem to see what the cost difference is, if you'd like me to do that.
Yeah, it would be helpful to understand kind of both pieces of it. What would that cost? In other words, to do this while the construction crews are here and we're engaged in this project versus looking at one, two, and six and what that's going to cost? Because I don't think this is going to go away as an issue.
Right.
Particularly since it's, it seems like the research into the impact of these chemicals is in its relative infancy, because it doesn't seem like this is something people have been looking at for long periods of time. And it may well be that that additional research will reveal that there's no material health impact from this. It could also reveal something else.
Whether that has material or not, we really don't have that discretion, really.
So that, what you alluded to, the science and regulatory overlap here, and they've had this experience with other chemicals on the list where they have an internal debate whether any amount of the chemical is a safe amount. And they've already got obviously an infinitesimal value here because you're talking parts per trillion, not even parts per billion, which was the TCE standard. So they're already down to really a trace amount, and now the debate is, well, is even that permissible, which is probably an ongoing debate.
Yeah. It, it'll be interesting to, in the, you know, as, as towns have now begun testing, and then they have, they're looking at this trajectory, right? Especially some wells, say, like us, you know, we're at, with one and two, you know, probably, if I had, I guess there's probably one in 50 communities that are probably on the same cusp, having the same conversation at the same select meeting. My dollars to donuts, that's what's happening right now. And they're probably also saying, we need probably three or four, five more data points, you know, to see, you know, we have any outliers? Should those be really thrown out? You know, some, we had a detection here, but we've had no detect for 12, for 12 months. So, you know, because there's also some sampling error that, that does occur. There are, sometimes there's errors in, oh, this came from here and not from here. So things like that. So if you string a bunch of these together, I think, well, we'll be in a better, you know, I think we'll have, we'll have more data. And I don't think that, I, I think it's prudent to activate our engineer to show that our interest is in studying this, that we, you know, a reasonable person would start to focus on one and two, let's understand the implication to three and four for two, you know, for two reasons. One is, yeah, we have an active project there, but the, the fact that, you know, we're putting in, you know, $11 billion plant, that if it costs a couple billion dollars more to, to, for the insurance policy for something in the future. But, you know, I should point out that even, you know, with a, you know, if we, you know, we say go today, you probably won't be able to retrofit that plant with a filter, with a design, and also, you know, have it approved by the DEP for, you know, at least another two years, at least another two years.
So I think the prudent thing for the town to do is to explore the issue about wells one and two to see if there is enough room there to put any sort of facility, get the answer to that, get the answer also to whether or not the marginal cost of, of doing it now versus later is different for three and four. My guess is it won't be. But we need that data point to make a decision. And I think that we just need to plan around the 20 parts per trillion because that's what the state's telling us. So we don't have any choice about that. So we don't get into the politics of it. If somebody wants to do that, they can go and petition at the state level to, to address that. So I think we need the data points in terms of, this is 65,000, Mo, you said would get us a study for, for.
One, two, and six. One, one, two, and six feasibility study.
I'm not even sure you need to do it for six at this point, but, you know, if you think that's, that's important, I would listen to that.
I would, I would do them all to, just to, to safeguard again, you know, if we had to do in any plant, just to make sure that we had the, the proper, you know, areas, the, what we, what we would need. Then you can go right into the design instead of having to do a study all over again. I do want to make a point that there are PFAS treatment grants that the second round is coming out in October, and I believe the final round will be coming out in January. So we, if we did have some sort of project that, you know, everyone agreed that we need to move forward on, we could get additional monies from there as well.
What, what program is that?
This is the PFAS treatment grants that they have available for communities that are looking to put in treatments for, for PFAS.
Okay. So this is outside of the.
Outside of the testing.
Project priority list for the, for the, for the, for the credit.
Right. It's, it's going to be competitive still, but at least it's something out there that we could, you know, put in for if we had some viable project.
Yep.
Seems, seems a worthwhile thing to do.
I, I think, I agree with Pete that getting the, you know, doing the, getting the information, getting that kind of stuff makes sense. And I think, I think, Mo, you were suggesting wells one and two. I'm looking at the numbers for one and two, and I'm going back to January where the number for one and two was also extremely close to 20. And if there's any actionable plan here, what would be at the top of my list would be one and two in making, you know, if we're going to do anything, would be that. The other observation I'd make is I think wells one, two, and six are in the Charles River watershed, three and four are in the Napa River watershed. So to the extent we're talking about a specific plume that could be moving along, I wouldn't automatically assume a plume that would affect the wells in the Charles River watershed would be able to cross over into the Napa River watershed from just a overall effect standpoint.
Yeah, and well, it, I, I would caution us to, to think about this as, as a plume because the, these, these chemicals are used like throughout society. So it wasn't like there was a fire engine manufacturing plant, you know, 40 miles up the road, and this is what they use for fire suppression in the factory. That's not what this is. I mean, unfortunately, it is, it is, it is, it's probably in my shirt, if I had to guess. I, I'm just, it's a wrinkle-free shirt. I'm sure there's something there.
Bill, could you take your shirt off, please, then?
There goes my next FCC violation.
Christine, anything else on this?
Yeah.
Anyone have anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much, Bill. Appreciate you coming in. And maybe we'll touch base once we have a sense on the feasibility study and all the rest of it.
Yeah, please invite us, invite, invite me, invite, invite us back. I think.
You will be invited.
We have, we have our bond auction coming up for the, for the filtration plant. Very excited to see where the number comes out.
Yes.
Nervous and excited, but.
So everyone can bid early and often tomorrow.
Exactly.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Next, we will welcome Jackie Alfred, Megan Sullivan, and Catherine White, co-chairs of Sustainable Medfield, to discuss Sustainable Medfield. Hello, everybody.
Hi. Well, hello. Thank you very much for letting Megan, Catherine, and I join you in your meeting this evening. Oh, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Go right ahead, yeah.
Oh, sorry about that.
You're, you're up on the big screen and everything.
Okay. Well, it's a, a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and it's an exciting time for us at Sustainable Medfield. We had sent a packet, so hopefully you had a chance to take a look at some of the information. It included a news article that came out in the paper last Thursday, and the initial draft of a brochure that we'll be utilizing this month as we engage in our official launch of Sustainable Medfield, which is tied into our activities at Medfield Day and enhanced outreach to the community. So we're thrilled to be here because obviously engaging the town in our efforts is extremely important to us. We want you to be aware of what we're doing, which, as the name of our organization implies, is focused on sustainability here within Medfield, which touches on many aspects of the environment, including water and other items. But, you know, I should step back a moment to say that Sustainable Medfield came about because our founder, who in fact is Megan Sullivan, who's here tonight, had the realization that there were numerous groups here in town that have an environmental focus, whether it's by clear definition, being an official town group, or maybe a little bit more informally, yet they had no clear way to collaborate or share ideas in any sort of efficient or ongoing way. So because of that realization and the fact that there was a little bit of a need there, the first meeting was held in January of 2020, and we've been meeting ever since quarterly, usually in this type of Zoom format, although just today we had our most recent meeting, which happily was in person in the meeting space of the public library. And there's just been a lot of engagement and enthusiasm for working together and collaborating to promote environmental interests and sustainability here in Medfield. We also in, earlier this year in January, officially joined part of the Medfield Foundation group. So we're thrilled to be officially under their umbrella, and we feel that that helps us have a broader reach within town as well as underscore the fact that we are a non-for-profit and non-political entity. So we think it kind of validates the fact that we're, we're here to stay and, and making progress. So we, we aim to capitalize on the synergy of bringing groups within Medfield together, each which has an interest in the environmental and sustainability space. And we're aiming to, to reach a broader portion of Medfield businesses, organizations, and residents. And given all of the current information on the importance of protecting the environment and climate change, we feel like now it's, it's more relevant than ever that we work as best as we can. So to, to kind of make it clear, Sustainable Medfield has a dual focus. The initial focus of the group was, or the. The initial focus of the group was, or the organization, was to bring together various groups here in Medfield to meet quarterly. I'd like to, if you don't mind, just share my screen to, hopefully, I'll try to highlight. So, this chart depicts some of the groups that we've interacted with, but not all, and you can see, kind of here with Sustainable Medfield as maybe the hub of a networking opportunity, we have brought together different groups, now some are obviously with an eco or environmental bend to them, such as, you know, there's the energy committees participated, we've had the transfer station and recycling committee participate, Medfield Environment Action, the garden club, but then some of the other groups that have had the opportunity to participate and cross-pollinate ideas are maybe not so obvious players in the environmental space, some of the houses of worship, the cultural alliance, oh, did I? Sorry about that, I'm not sure what I just did.
Everything is, everything is fine on this end, keep going.
Oh, oh, good, I had a window pop up on my screen. And most recently, as in last evening, Megan and I had the opportunity to speak with the memo group and engage with them, and we're thrilled, you know, that they, they too want to participate in the sharing and networking of information. So I thought that this might, you know, help show you the breadth of outreach that we've had. We've also engaged with a high school environmental club and hope to work a little bit more collaboratively with the schools, although we know the past year things were quite difficult, you know, so now might be a better time to engage with them. Now, I'll just stop sharing this just for a moment, well, actually, I'll, I'll move ahead in just a second. The second focus, in addition to bringing together groups, we felt that we could leverage the groups to access their membership or, you know, respective communities, so that enables us to reach the actual residents of Medfield. And by reaching individuals, we realized, you know, that we could utilize an established state platform to share information on what actions an individual can take, or what steps, some of them are small, some are larger, to move forward. In, yep, I'm trying to just get this a little bit up here, and I'm having some trouble forwarding my slides, in terms of working towards improving our environment. So, we did set up a website, it's just the simple name of sustainablemedfield.org. I put some of these screenshots into a slide deck just to easily show you. It's a very simple website, very easy to navigate, we, we hope that just about anyone can access it, but from our homepage, as you can see, there's this green button that says, "Visit the action portal," and from, let's see, move this down, from there, you can get to our, our action portal. This is a, where you can kind of click to take action, or sign and join in. Moving from there, that would bring you to a list of actions that we've already identified through the groups that we've been working with. And I should point out, and please, Megan or Catherine, jump in if there's anything you'd like to add, but at the current time, there are 12, or, I'm sorry, 14 respective actions that a resident here in Medfield can select, put on their own to-do list, and then work towards achieving as they feel is appropriate for their own situation. So, some of them are larger actions, some are smaller. I selected, for the purposes of today, to go into buy or lease an electric car. Now, that's obviously a much larger action, and it's something that someone might consider every 10 or 12 years, depending on how quickly someone decides they need a new vehicle, but if that is something an individual's interested in, they can click into this one-stop educational resource to get a description and access informational websites. So, this is a PowerPoint slide that I made, so I'm not going to, you know, be able to click you through accessing the highlighted educational references, but you could see here, you can follow two steps to take if you're interested in pursuing getting an electric vehicle, which we've found many people are kind of exploring and considering at this point in time. And then, you additionally can see a testimonial that's actually written by a Medfield resident. So, this couple, Kirsten and Glenn, posted to the site, and, and these are voluntary from residents on March 7th, and they're sharing the information because, good for them, they happen to already own two electric vehicles, and they can share from their experience. Now, I didn't, there is a deeper dive section, but I thought for the purposes of keeping, you know, this is brief and being respectful of your time, I wasn't prepared to take you through that, but there really is a wealth of information that someone can access, and it's been interesting because the collaboration between our groups, one of our most recent actions was driven by the Medfield Garden Club, and it was because they, they were, you know, naturally interested in protecting pollinators in town, and planting a native garden, and non-invasive plants. So really, these are specific actions to our community derived by our groups specifically for Medfield residents. So I, I wanted to give you that overview and really just underscore the fact that you'll see us very active at Medfield Day, and we hope so much that at some point, you know, we can consider that the town is officially a part of this networking collaboration. It's, it's also a great, a way or opportunity to share, there may be initiatives that you wish to share with our membership, and so we'll always welcome any of you or any of the administrators to attend a quarterly meeting or to share information through our platform, as you see that. So, not sure if anybody wants to add, Megan or Catherine, or if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Pete. Any questions, comments?
No, no, I think it's a great thing that you guys are doing, I thank you for doing it.
Gus?
I also think it's great, I, going through the materials that you sent, I, my strong preference is through education, advocacy, getting people to understand why to do things, and get them to choose to step forward to do it, so, one of the reasons I particularly like this is that's the, that's the theme I picked up. I had one question, and Megan, you may be the one to answer it, when I first read these materials, the first question I had in my head was, how does Sustainable Medfield relate to Medfield Environmental Action? I'm just trying to get straight in my head how those two organizations relate to one another.
They are only related in that Medfield Environment Action is one of the groups that networks with Sustainable Medfield.
So, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how to understand that answer, because it seems like there should be some sort of collaboration or coherence. Maybe not, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I think we're trying to take steps to really keep it independent and just have it be the information sharing group.
So then, if that's true, then, okay, then how, what would be the similar comparable description of Medfield Environmental Action?
That Medfield Environment Action, we're, we seek to really inspire people to action, and we would not hesitate to ask people to reach out to their selectmen and express their point of view.
Okay, so environmental action will be more of a politically active group, where this will be more of an educationally active, okay.
Sustainable Medfield would hesitate to ask people to reach out to their selectmen. They might still do it, but they would hesitate first.
And for what it's worth, speaking as one selectman, I wouldn't automatically say Sustainable Medfield, if, if you have good ideas, and those good ideas make sense for individuals here in town, and perhaps they're good ideas that make sense for the town, you know, I, because I asked Megan that question, I don't want to convey the sense that there's a political wall that, that blocks all, all productive, useful, educational information flow, so I don't, I didn't want to leave that impression. I guess then the one other secondary question I'd have is, I assume that the role, you have Mac, you have the energy committee on this, can I assume that the climate action committee is, some of the things you're trying to do sound to me like what the people putting the climate action plan together were also trying to do, can I assume that's a, a big, that's a point where there's also collaboration?
Go ahead, Jackie.
Megan, you're right in the middle of the intersection, so you're controlling the traffic.
The way this, the way it ideally works, right, is that a group like the Town of Medfield Climate Action Plan generates the actions that then we populate that tool with, our action portal. So, the?
Okay, yep, okay.
Transfer Station Recycling Committee comes to us and says, "We'd love you to do food composting, we'd love you to do, you know, think about your disposing of your textiles properly," and it also gives residents just one place to go. You know, what, what could I do to make changes? And some of them are big, and some of them are small.
Okay, great, well, anyway, I, I wish you all the best of luck with what you're trying to do here, I think it's great.
Thank you. I think what we would love to do, as Jackie alluded to, is, you know, actively ask you to join our network and be an icon or one of the ovals on our diagram, and then also officially, maybe, or, you know, unofficially, send someone to our meetings, which would be nice. We think there's like a lot of ways in which we can work together, I was just thinking the water department might, you know, at some point have conservation measures that they'd like to bring forward, and this would be a great forum for that, so, that, that is an ask.
I'll react quickly first, I think, Megan, I, I think that's, I'd like to think about the best way to do that, and where, where my head immediately went, Christine, is whether, my quick reaction is, if you're saying you'd like the Board of Selectmen to be on your chart, I think that might not be the right thing to do. If we said the Town of Medfield is on the chart, that would be different, because then I, I mean, we're all, we're all trying to get this stuff done right. And then in terms of who would be an official connection, I guess I'd have to, I'd be open to ideas on that, I.
Yeah, I just think we have to be mindful of people's time, right, in terms of how many cooks we're gonna have in the kitchen, and how many different meetings people are asked to be at to talk about some of the same things, and so, I think we have to be careful before we say we're gonna commit to having someone who's employed by the town going to meetings, as opposed to taking in information and being willing to pass that along and participate where appropriate, so I think, I think we should think about it from that perspective. Obviously, we're all open to good ideas and would like to implement them where they can and where they make sense.
Speaking personally, I, if you, if you have an email list, you can add me to it, I, you know, even if there's no official connections, per se, I'd like to know what you're doing, and, you know, I'd certainly try to connect in, particularly on issues that, you know, for whatever reason, at any particular point in time, I'm particularly interested in, so.
Great, we will do that, we, you know, Jen, we have been starting to put together notes that come out of our meetings, so that will be good, and we can forward those, and I would just say, the meetings are meant to be very minimal and not intrusive, we meet quarterly, today's meeting was an hour, so, and it's right, was right across the street of the library, so, in terms of commitment, you know, we're low-key, people come when they can, and, but we encourage involvement, and I had talked to Christine about this earlier, and I think her, Christine, you can jump in if I was characterizing this, but she would just wanted to be out, make sure you guys knew what it was, and that you were supportive of the group, and then I think she's ready to move forward.
Yes, but we, we get a lot of requests to attend a lot of committee meetings, and we are struggling with meeting our demands on our town-appointed committees, that I'm reluctant to add anybody else on the outside unless it's an occasional meeting, obviously, if it's only quarterly, we will try and make that work.
Great, well, thank you all, I appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so I'm gonna flip, we're gonna flip four and five here, we're gonna go to Georgia next, because I know she's probably been up since 3:30 this morning, and would like to be on now, and so, and I think five and six go together, Georgia.
Yes.
So these are both Georgia-Colebus items, so we'll do that, then we'll switch back to four.
All right, thank you, before I turn into a pumpkin.
Yeah, thank you, Georgia. So the first item is an update from you regarding the town's bond rating.
Yes, so in anticipation of our bond sale tomorrow, the Town of Medfield met with Moody's last week, and I am happy to announce that Moody's reinstated our AA1 bond rating for the upcoming bond issue. After a thorough review of our town finances, they cited four items, we have a sound financial position with a healthy reserve level, a stable tax base with strong wealth levels, we have a positive history of voter approvals of two and a half overrides, and we have manageable debt, pension, and OPEB liabilities. So, our bond sale is tomorrow at 11:00 AM. We are selling $13,975,000 worth of bonds tomorrow, broken down as follows, a new fire engine for half a million, a new dump truck for $188,000, a sidewalk tractor for $180,000, and $150,000 for road construction, specifically West Street. Those are the four items that were voted in the capital budget at the last annual town meeting in May. The principal and interest will be paid out of the capital stabilization fund. This issue also includes, or the majority of this issue includes, the $11.5 million for the water treatment plant, and that principal and interest will be paid by the rate payers of the, of the town through the Water Enterprise Fund. Additionally, this, this issue includes $205,000 to pay for the maturing band, the bond anticipation note that was borrowed on June 30th of 2021, and it is due on the 30th of September. And of course, no borrowing is, is perfect without a refunding. And due to the low interest rate environment, we have found two bond issues, 2007 and 2010, that we will refund in our bond sale tomorrow. This refunding will add $1,252,000 of borrowing. It is estimated to produce, over the existing life of these loans, which is between five and eight years, between $50,000 and $60,000, depending on what our interest rate will be. So it's kind of like refinancing your mortgage.
Per year, Georgia, per year, 50, 60,000, or total?
No, over the life of the existing bonds for 2007 and the 2010 issue.
Thank you.
Those are related to the Granite Street Water main, the Cronin Land acquisition from 2010, the senior center plans and the construction, the AmNot Land acquisition, and a fire engine from the 2007 bonds. So I'm here this mo, this evening, it's not morning.
It will be very soon.
Give us three hours, Georgia.
So I'm here this evening to ask you to vote to authorize me as the town treasurer to issue the refunding of the bonds, relative to those portions of the 2007 and the 2000 and 20, 2007 and 2010 bonds. I believe you have the certificate, and I would appreciate you voting for it, so that I can send it off to Bond Council before 9:00 AM.
Just, just as an aside, it strikes me that the name or the word refunding the bonds, it's got a double meaning, it's both refunding the bonds and refunding the bonds.
That is true, Gus.
Thank you.
Well, those two.
That'll be a big hit at the Bond Lawyers Association.
Those two bonds were at 3.5% to 4%. I did mention earlier to Bill Harvey, a municipality last Thursday had a bond issue of $22 million. and they got close to a 2%. So this bond issue is a little smaller, so we're hoping for something lower than two, which would be great. So we'll see tomorrow.
The fact that it's the clerk that gets to sign this and not the chair, I put a little extra thought into this one.
Oh, good. So you can pass it right to me.
Yes, well, I think, I don't know. This one I printed out at home.
No, I think Nick has the official...
I think there's an official one. This one's featherweight.
You have some kind of a stamp or you have to put on it? Any questions about the refunding of the bonds? Pete?
No.
Gus?
Thank you for doing it, Georgia.
You're welcome.
So can I motion?
Okay, sorry.
Ready? Like Mike usually says, once you're winning, you just need to stop talking. So I move that we authorize the clerk of the Board of Selectmen to sign the note of the... The vote of the Board of Selectmen confirming the ability to proceed with the refunding of these bonds.
And also vote to authorize the treasurer to refund...
And vote to... It's a single vote, but and to authorize the treasurer to...
Chairman, there is very specific vote language, so if you want to refer to the certificate, or it's just the vote language itself is what takes the lines along.
Okay. Yep. I move that in order to reduce interest costs, the town treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from... Am I reading the right paragraph? Okay. At one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, to refund all or any portion of the following outstanding bonds of the town. A municipal purpose loan of 2007 bonds dated June 1, 2007, and B municipal purpose loan of 2010 bonds dated June 15, 2010, together the refunded bonds, that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal of and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds, and that any premium received by the town upon the sale of the refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote, less any of such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount of refunding bonds that would otherwise need to be issued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Gus need not read it again. Any amendments to the motion?
I ask you all to witness this signature, which has been issued by the clerk of the Board of Selectmen in a more regal, austere manner than just about any action I've seen since being elected selectman four years ago.
All right, thank you. And I'll be here next week so that we can finalize the sale of the bonds.
Terrific. Do I get to sign those too, or...
Oh, you all get to sign them.
Excellent.
And I just want to say thank you to the whole financial team who worked incredibly hard working on all of the information that Moody's requested of them. I know there were some very late night meetings held, so I appreciate all the work that they did.
It's a good primer for us for the next... Which obviously, we're still... I know this question keeps coming up. We're still waiting for a more concrete cash flow statement from the Permanent Planning Building Committee, from Mike. Once we get that, we will work with the financial team and with our financial advisor and come up with some type of a financing mechanism for the project.
I thought this report, I will say, for... In my professional life, I have to read a lot of ratings agency reports. And I thought this was a pretty good one overall. I mean, I think it was better than our 2015 one in a lot of ways. And there was good news in it. I think if you look at kind of the two major factors for upgrades, and we have the second highest rating, that's essentially a very good rating, would be an increase in our reserve funds and an increase in the tax base, the two things that would lead to an upgrade. And so I think that, one of which we have some control over, the other we really don't. But I think it does vindicate the effort that we've made and the Warrant Committee has made to stick to the financial policies that we adopted three years ago, to keep those going up. I think if you look at the history of our fund balances, there was a dip down a few years ago, and those have recovered because the Warrant Committee has enforced compliance with those policies. And I think it's important. It gets overlooked, I think, in the discussions about the principal amounts of the borrowing that we do. But the cost to the town of the variation, the interest rate, is huge over the life of any bond. And so even, I mean, obviously, the refinancing and the refunding, it's a relatively small amount, so the savings is modest. It's worth doing. But I think if some of these larger numbers, like this $11.5 million, the difference between paying, you know, 1.9% versus 2.6%, that's a huge difference in that case for our water and sewer repair. So thanks to you and everybody for your work.
And our rating agency was very impressed with our capital stabilization and our building stabilization reserves. I think that's what sets us apart.
Well, they should be. But I thought it was a good report. I was pleased to read it, and I think it reflected a fairly detailed review from the... I don't know which of the two analysts was the primary one who did this. But it's, as I said, I've read a fair amount of these, and this is a pretty good one overall. So I think we should be happy about it.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you Tuesday.
Thank you, Georgia.
Thanks for squeezing me in.
All right. All right. Next is to discuss the schedule for the special town meeting and the special election, a potential vote to set the dates for and or call the special town meeting and the special election. So Christine, what do you have for us on this?
So I have been working with Scott McDermott and Marion Benaldi to come up with dates. And I know that there is some preference for having a weeknight date, and there's some preference for having a weekend date. So in meeting all the requirements, calling the meetings, notifying the town clerk of an election, we have narrowed this down to Saturday, the 6th of November, Sunday, the 7th of November, or Monday, the 8th of November. And then I would recommend, in speaking with the town clerk, that we hold the special election on November 15th. Now, one of the requirements in holding the special election, when you're going to have a Proposition Two and a Half override question, is that you must notify the clerk of your vote to call the election as well as the wording of that ballot question 35 days prior to that election. So I would recommend that we do that. We have drafts of the language now. I would recommend that we do that at our meeting next week. But I think as we move forward in these projects, we need to start putting dates on people's calendars to begin moving forward.
So you're suggesting that we have a vote to call the town meeting and the election at next week's meeting?
I am actually going to ask you to hold off calling the special town meeting until the 14 days before. And my rationale on that is if we choose to have the... There may be the possibility that we may need to have the meeting outside. And we're looking at the logistics of that. So I would recommend calling the special town meeting the 14 days before as required and posting the warrant. So we could do that at our meeting, I believe we have, until October 19.
But we can agree upon the date and announce the date.
We need to have a date. We don't need to do the official calling and meet up.
The formal call would be... Right, okay. When we know what the exact...
Exactly.
As close as we can get to what the logistical date's going to be. Okay.
And the reason for that is...
The wording for the... As I understand it, the wording for the ballot question and the wording for the town meeting vote is largely driven by the MSBA, right?
And Bond Counsel.
And Bond Counsel.
The two and a half is statutory.
Yeah. So Bond Counsel has given us a draft, and they've worked on it back and forth with the school building committee.
So as a practical matter, if it's the 6th or 7th, I'm out of town. So I... Not that that matters, but I won't be able to make the meeting. If we do it on the 6th or 7th?
The 6th or 7th?
Yeah. I'll be back on the 7th.
Okay. We can move to the following...
What time are you getting back? It may still be going.
Don't move it. It just happens to be we have a trip planned out of town from Thursday to Sunday. It just worked out that's the weekend. If anybody cares, it's the Army Air Force game in Dallas, so...
Oh, nice. Cowboy Stadium?
No, it's actually... It's actually in, I guess it's closer to Fort Worth.
Okay.
We can move to the following weekend.
So I would suggest you, if I'm the reason you're doing it, don't do that. But it just happens to be, as a practical matter, if it's the weekend, I can't do that. I won't be here.
And I think we'd be up against it weather-wise. And I think we're running a risk weather-wise.
I'm getting nervous about the weather.
I'm not sure... Can I re... Well, let's get the dates straight first, before we move off this topic.
Well, I know there was some debate amongst yourselves about whether or not it should be a Sunday, a Saturday, Sunday, or a Monday. So I think once we determine that, then we can finalize the date.
I mean, I will say, all things considered, I favor the Sunday, given the flexibility, if we have to be inside or outside, and then just the reality of giving the setup involved. I don't know about having so many people needed to set it up coming into a school on a school day, given whatever is going to be COVID-wise. And so I think, as between Saturday and Sunday, I think that there's a bigger issue for observant Jews on a Saturday who can't participate. I'm not aware of any Christian denominations in town that would not permit people to attend on a Sunday.
Say that again, please.
I'm not aware of any Christian denominations in town that would prevent people from attending on a Sunday, whereas that is an issue on a Saturday. So my, I mean, my general thinking about this and going back and forth is that to favor the Sunday versus the Saturday over the Monday. That was kind of my instinct on it. And then, you know, so...
So my thinking was to have it on a weekend, and I was sort of indifferent between the two dates. Your reason for having it on the Sunday makes sense to me, so I would suggest going along with Sunday too then, and having it in the afternoon, if we're going to do it at that time of year. So in case we are doing it outside, we can have some sunshine, maybe.
Yeah. Gus?
It's gonna... I'll miss it. So I see the logic. So it's a concept, yeah. I get it.
Would you add the Monday as a rain date?
Yeah, I think if we had to be outside, but Monday, it becomes like you're outside at night, basically.
Yeah.
Or outside at 4 o'clock on a Monday. I mean, it's just like, there's no...
Yeah.
I mean, I think the reality is that if we have to be outside, we're really crossing our fingers about the weather for that Sunday and really hoping we can be inside, I think frankly, which is the best scenario.
I think our preference is to be inside.
Yeah.
But there's some logistics to that as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think we probably... I'm kind of thinking a little bit like some setups in some places. You have different areas for greater distancing and all of that. So we might be able to set up some satellite rooms for people who want to be more distant than they can be in the gym and, you know...
Yes, we have to have... We're planning on a significant number of overflow rooms.
Yeah. But I think in terms of like special, you know, setup in certain places, if you want to be separated and all of that, I mean, I think it's going to be a challenge anyway. But I think that's probably the best way to go on Sunday, the 7th, in the afternoon. And I think I'd agree with Pete on that. I have no issue with the 15th on the special election.
Okay.
Does that work for you?
That's what...
Yeah. And then if it doesn't pass at the town meeting, we just don't have the election.
No, you still have the election.
We still have it.
There are two independent events.
Right.
Yep.
It just wouldn't make a difference.
You'd still have the election.
Yeah, okay.
All right, okay. And what happens then if it doesn't pass at town meeting, but passes at the election? Do you have another...
There is the possibility it can be brought up. Somebody can call an additional special town meeting.
I got you.
You can keep the process going indefinitely, basically.
Oh.
And it has happened that way in some communities.
That would be a delight. I think we all want this to go on as long as possible.
But the actual official call of the town meeting will be on two weeks before.
Correct. And the reason for that is because if we need to make a change, we have to give the definitive location when we post. And we can't post that it's just going to be at the high school. We have to have the actual location.
All right.
So I can tell people we're going with Sunday, the 7th.
Anything further, Gus? Sounds like you might have something.
Yeah, and I'm not sure this is the right time to bring it up. So I can bring... I'll bring it up now, and I'll apologize if this is the wrong time and the wrong circumstance. I watched both of the Warrant Committee two and a half hour meetings. I am deeply grateful for the Warrant Committee, for the two meetings that they've run, the conversations that they've had with the building committee and then with the fundamental, the Dale at Dale folks. I think they're doing a great job of letting the issues come up. I've also had a couple of conversations with people that have asked me what I think will happen in that vote. And I don't know. I can't predict the future. And incidentally, Mike, if I'm bringing this up, you're in a more awkward spot just because you're on the building committee and I'm raising this. The... Where my head has been, and nothing I'm saying here is meant to imply any issues around me favoring one location or another. I'm actually neutral, and it's not intended toward the direction of how the vote will come out. But what's been plaguing me a little bit for a couple of days is the fact that as three selectmen, our job is also to make sure that we... It won't do the town any good if we go into a town meeting that is set up to have a failure. And I'm acutely aware that there is a fork in the road here, specifically around this. And my only interest is to make sure that we, as three selectmen, navigating the town, or helping the town navigate, are not just automatically going down a path without kind of having collective confidence that this can lead to a good result. And the reason I'm hesitating so much is it sounds like I'm spinning a ball in a certain way, and I really don't want to do that. But for the past few days, after having seen those two sessions, I find myself saying, "Are you sure?" Or, "How confident are you that we will get to a vote that is a constructive and good outcome for the town if it's the 7th of November?" And it's wanting to get to that vote. I can't predict the future. You don't know what people really think. It's just I feel uneasy. And this is a conversation with the two of you, not, you know, not as a member of committee. It's the three of us selectmen just being sure that however we proceed with this, however it turns out after the fact, we're satisfied that we didn't just either allow something to happen that wasn't going to turn out well, but by the same token, we didn't stop something from happening that really represents where the town is ready to go. I mean, conventional wisdom says we'll get an answer, and there's a pretty good chance it could be a positive answer. But I have to say, this cycle, it's plaguing me a little bit. So I'm not really... That's why I asked the question, when do we actually have to fish or cut bait here? And I kind of went into this meeting wanting to put that on the table with the two of you, and I'm truly talking to the two of you, the selectmen.
Yeah.
That's it. But then I... I'm not sure if this was a stupid topic to bring up right now.
No, I think it's a good topic to bring up. And Pete, I don't know if you have a reaction to it?
Well, I've been wondering about what my role should be ever since I've witnessed the strong disagreement with the Wheelock Choice by certain residents in town who have been exceedingly vocal and very well organized. But as I've rethought the process, I don't see that it should come out any differently in my mind, is how I've reacted to it. I see nothing wrong with the analysis that I made that says that the school should be built at the Wheelock campus. I, the people that build the schools have told me that if we build it at Dale Street, we'll get a compromised school, and I don't want to spend $82 million and get a compromised product for the town and the kids in town, so. The educational benefits were an additional plus for me. They weren't as much of a moving factor for me as getting a compromised school at a, at a too small, too tight site. But I don't, I don't see how you can, I, I had suggested the, when this first got brought up, when we met with the school building committee, that, that we should ask the town meeting about the site, and they said, no, no, you can't do that at this point. So it would have been good, interesting to have a read of the town before, but apparently the way the process unfolds, you need to unfold it and, and then have the vote and the, and the read of the town meeting, so I don't think there's any other way to do it.
So Gus, I, I take your point, and I think it's more of a, I think I, it's a process point more than a substantive point, in the sense that, I think the question you're asking is if this is sort of doomed to failure, or are we just moving this along towards doom? And I think the answer is no one knows.
Right.
And I, I think the way people talk about things, and this is just sort of, it's, it's in the air of communication, is half, here is my substantive view of what should happen, and half, here's what I'm predicting other people are going to do.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I think in, in the circumstances where, the very unusual circumstances we've been in over the past year and a half, I think it's harder than ever to get a real sense of where people are. And I think we've kind of, for the people who have the strongest views, we've, they've been aired pretty thoroughly. And I think, I echo what you say about the warrant committee. You know, there've been a number of times as a selectman that I've kind of looked back on and missed being on the warrant committee, because there's, the nature of the work is a certain way, and nothing about the two of you, but just that. It's, well, because most of my time on the warrant committee, you were there too, Gus, so.
On other times, it is the two of us.
No, but I think the, the nature of that work, and, and it's a larger group, and it's, it's focused on certain things, and and I really enjoyed being on that committee. And Thompson's always talked about how much she loved being on the warrant committee. There's something about it. I, I give them all the credit in the world because they're putting a huge amount of time in. And I was driving to work. I had had, I think, I think there'd been a meeting the night before, and I'm driving to work at like 7:30 in the morning down Dale Street, and there's Sharon, you know, walking, and Steve Callahan walking into a meeting in the, in the public. And they're just putting in a huge amount of time and doing a great service to that. So I think my, where I've come down on this is sort of having faith overall in the process and the town meeting, and to kind of give the full town meeting, the full people at the vote, people who haven't been heard from yet, or people who've sort of been waiting, or they, they want to come out at this one particular decision point one way or the other, to have that opportunity to do it. And so I think to try to prejudge it based on the incomplete data that we have to say, this is either doomed to failure, or it's going to succeed, or what have you, I, I think it's kind of, from my perspective, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's a fool's errand, but it's anyone's guess, because if you actually add up, if you had some sort of data point on who are the people we've actually heard from on this, it's probably less than 25% of the people who will be at that town meeting. And maybe they're broadly representative, and you can extrapolate from that, or maybe it's not. And I think, I think we'll, I think we'll find out. But I do think people, you know, should get an up or down vote on what's being proposed.
So where my head went when I was wrestling with this is I was projecting myself out into the future, and I was, and, and again, you're absolutely right. We don't know how to, how to handicap this. I know I have an uneasy feeling, and I know I've had an uneasy feeling for a while around this one, so that's probably what's driving me, but we're, what I did was I put myself out post-town meeting with a failure. And I said, what's the aftermath? And that aftermath is sort of an ugly looking picture, for one thing, because I think the very first question is, so who would be on the next building committee that has the, the expertise, the perspective, you know, the, the drive and the willingness that we've seen from the current members of the building committee? Who would you, who, who would be, what would that second committee be when you take all the key players out of this one and start again? And then you, you play that out, for how long would it take then to do that? Versus the request, and this is the request the Dale, Dale folks have come in with, is ask for a delay and, and do a more thorough job of this alternative. I'm not saying they, I bought that, I'm just saying that would be a scenario that something will come out at the end of that. And we could, and you're definitely lose a year, my guess, at least my guess would be. But that would not be quite the desolate aftermath of the town meeting if it doesn't fail. Big if, if it doesn't fail. I've kind of concluded, I think the warrant committee's doing yeoman's work right now. And probably more than any other time I can think of, even when I was probably on the warrant committee, I am actually going to be very interested in hearing what the warrant committee recommends, given the kind of work and the thoroughness and the open, open but discriminating efforts that they're making to listen to people, but also make sure that what they're being told holds up. So I, I find myself kind of saying, I think I'm kind of depending on the warrant committee to give me a recommendation, and I would, I'm going to pay a lot of attention to that recommendation, because I know how much work they're doing. And I bring it up now more, not to get an answer to any of this, but this has been on my mind for, for a week, and it needs to be on all of our minds, at least between now and the time we make a decision whether we're actually going to call a town meeting. And I, in a sense, Mike, I apologize, because you've been doing a lot of work with the building committee, and it's, I'm not intending to attack.
No, no, it's not an attack at all. I mean, I, I understand, I understand the point, obviously, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I think, I don't think anybody should be supremely confident in what's going to happen. I, I think, obviously, it wouldn't be the first town that, that has had this happen. I mean, I think when you think about though, on the far side of it, I mean, a lot of towns have this happen, and what they end up with is the plan they voted down, just plus 25% cost.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because you look back at it again, another committee looks at it again, the facts are still the same, the analysis is still the same, and you just end up paying more for the same thing. It's not to say it's definitely going to happen, because I think it's also, I don't think it's correct to just assume automatically that had the other site been selected, that would just sail through with no objection.
Right, no, you're right.
And I think it's, 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 no one really knows, and so I think, you know, this is what I, I said as a member of the building committee, and, and I was, you know, I, I said what I said about the process over last summer in response to the town meeting, I won't rehash it, but that, the, the obligation is to make a substantive recommendation, you know, not just to try to handicap which way it's likely to go, because you can't do it, you know, you just can't do it. Everybody's trying to find some proxy for what everybody else thinks, and most people haven't been heard from. And I think sometimes, looking at the tone of some of the discussions, I understand why other people aren't eager to jump into the mix at times. And so hopefully they will be heard from, you know, over the course of the next two months and a half. And it, it's a good question to ask, Gus, and I guess I'm a little more sanguine about that if it's not successful, I don't think it's a disaster for the town. I think it's something to be dealt with. I think you'd have to understand what it means, you'd have to understand what the next step is. I, you know, I, I'm of the view, it doesn't necessarily mean you immediately shift into a, the same process, just at a different site. I think you'd, you'd take stock of the situation as it stands, and, you know, it's the nature of the MSBA process, it's the nature of a project like this, that you get into it three years ahead of time. Right? And we've had, for good reason, you know, we've had addition, some delays in the process to allow for more opportunity for public input. We've had some delays in the process, I think because the, the plumbing gets gummed up a little bit by COVID, and so it has taken a while. I think we'd have to take a fresh look at it and decide what we do next. I don't think we automatically move into a, it may as, it's not necessarily a one-year thing, it might be a two to three-year.
I guess my, my only point, and I'm not, I'm not pushing for an answer, my only point is I found myself thinking a lot harder about the two paths, and, and trying to look out and be, you know, basically I'm saying, are you sure the path we're on is the right path? And I'm not saying that because I'm implying it's not, I'm saying it because I find myself asking myself that question more this last week, that's all.
I, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. All right, next one up is the vote to authorize me to sign a grant application for the Community Compact Best Practices Program. Anybody against best practices? Anyone? Anyone want, want second best practices? Any questions on this one, Peter, Gus?
Uh, no.
No.
Have a motion?
I move that we vote to authorize the chair to sign a grant application for the Community Compact Best Practices Program.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Vote to approve two contracts with CAI Technologies for tax map maintenance services and GIS administrator services.
Did have.
Questions, comments?
I do have questions.
Pete, any questions or comments on this one?
I was just fascinated that they're working out of Vermont. It's the internet at work.
All right.
First, first question, is this a new service? Is there something we haven't had in the past?
No, I don't think so.
Yes.
We've, no.
Use somebody else.
Stop talking. It's a new vendor.
So it's a new vendor, but it's the, so we're contracting for the same services we've always had with the new vendor?
Yes.
Okay, that's the first question I had. Second question I had, this is really in the, in the weeds. The very, the first of the contracts is $4,900 base cost plus $15 per new slash changed building, which I, I don't think it matters, because it's $15 per new slash changed building, but my question is, I don't know what the total value of this contract is, because I don't know if we have 1,000 new slash changed buildings, or 10?
There are, it, it's usually pretty low on a year-to-year basis in a town like Medfield. You know, if you add on it, in addition to your house, eventually that'll be updated on, on a tax map.
Yeah.
So it was, I believe we were talking about 20 a year, and then in, in different years, it could be more expensive if there are a bunch of condos that come on, that would just come on, but that would be.
So it's a five to $6,000 contract is, is what I'm saying. Okay. The next question I had on the second one, which is the GIS administrative services, it's a time and materials contract with a $5,000 cap, no problem. The only problem I had is there's a clause in there about automatic renewal, and that I don't believe.
With our term in our contract document, the term, the contract will end June 30th, 22, so it will not automatically renew, even though it may say so in the attachment. The attachment is just for the price and the hourly rate.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Those are my questions.
All right.
Ready?
We had a motion.
Okay, I move that we vote to approve two contracts with CIA Technologies. The first for tax map maintenance series, approximately value of $5,000, and the second for GIS administrative services, a time and materials contract with a cap of $5,000.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? None? All right, next one, we'll defer the next one. I had some edits on the local approval certification for the Dale Street Building Committee, so we'll defer that. Consent agenda, I have one correction to the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
It is Medfield Youth Basketball, that is requesting permission for, to place signs about basketball registration from September 15th through October 15th, 2021, not Medfield Youth Baseball, which is actually Medfield Youth Baseball and Softball, is the official name of the organization. So other than that, that's the one correction I had on that. We have a, have block party requests for Indian Hill Road and Niantic Road for Sunday, September 25th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., Robert Spoor Road on September 19th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and then Friends of the Dwight Derby House are requesting a one-day beer and wine license for September 24th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Dwight Derby House. Any objections or concerns about the consent agenda? Peter, Gus?
I move that we, I approve the items on the consent agenda with the edit for Medfield Youth Basketball Association.
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
I oppose? None? All right. Meeting minutes, we don't have any. Town administrator updates.
So I just want to let everybody know, we are looking to finalize our board and committee appointments, so we have several committees that are still looking for members. If you are interested, please get your information to me as soon as possible. There's a list on the website. We are looking for an Affordable Housing Trust member, Cemetery Commission, Committee to Study Memorials, Community Gardens Commission Committee. Conservation Commission is seeking associate members. We have an opening on the Council on Aging, the Medfield Historical Commission, Medfield Safety Committee, Medfield Wildlife Committee, and the Memorial Day Committee. So if you are interested in any of those, please let us know.
All right. All right, next meeting date, September, next Tuesday, the next three Tuesdays. On the 28th, it's a meeting with the warrant committee, correct? Is it just the warrant committee, or school building committee as well?
It looks like it could be a mix of everybody. We're finalizing that.
Okay.
After our last meeting, the warrant committee has asked to be first on the agenda.
Don't they know we need two hours to warm up?
Yeah. No, they, they, they have earned the right to be the first on the agenda.
Yes, so they are the first, and then we will have a couple of other items to take, take up that evening as well.
Okay, great. And this is also kind of our general budget kickoff as well.
Yes.
Is this going to be the doom and gloom as well?
No.
Okay, not doom and gloom?
No.
All right, just general financial.
It, it'll be more a discussion and finalization of our financial policy, and then we'll move on from there.
Okay, all right, terrific. That's good. All right, selectmen reports, Pete.
Nothing special.
I've already given, just another shout out to the warrant committee for the, the work they've been doing, and I've had, on top of all that, I've also had conversations that, offline, that, they're just doing some real yeoman's work right now, so I appreciate it. The development committee's going to be meeting, it's going to work out only for an hour tomorrow to kind of do some of the follow-up questions with the two proposers for redeveloping the state hospital, so we're moving ahead with that. Interest, two, two distinct proposals, and we'll see where they go.
And just, I don't mean to, is, are you yet at the point where you'll be doing sort of municipal financial impact modeling as part of it, or not yet?
Not, not really yet. So what's hap, where we were at, we had the, the interview sessions with both Trinity and Polte. The special committees like CAM and the Historical Commission, and the Energy Committee, all had the opportunity, and the schools also, the school committee also, all provided us with their reactions to the proposal, so those have all come into the development committee. This, tomorrow night is really kind of to put together all of the remaining questions that we weren't able to get to at the, at the, you know, live Zoom interviews, kind of trying to get all the questions on the table that would be the kinds of questions we'd need to, need to answer before either of them would go into any kind of a due diligence kind of thing. So I think some of the things you're talking about would come in after that point, yeah.
Good.
And, and we haven't, the members of the committee haven't really examined each other's evaluations yet, and so we've got some stuff. We are kind of working with a small committee right now, because we've got two people. I think, Mark, you raised the issue, we have two members of the development committee that are also on the CAM board, and so I think based on your inputs, they have recused themselves in this phase. There is a question around how long do they have to stay recused, because first off, it's not a private thing they're getting. It's CAM, you know, they're, they're on a CAM board. While, while there maybe is some influence, I guess, being on that board, on the decision over who we might go with, it seems that like once the development committee has decided which of the, of the proposers is the one we should go with, it would make sense for those two to come back into the process.
It would depend what the, what the decision is, because that, that potential benefit will be determined ultimately by town meeting, and it's still going to be in play if that were.
But that's not a personal, well, so there's.
It doesn't have to be.
There's a.
It's, 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 you know, it's the Ethics Commission, the Ethics Statute and its interpretation by the Ethics Commission. It doesn't have to be, if it's a nonprofit that's benefiting.
But they're not getting any person, well, so.
No, that's, that's, that's the problem. That's not the standard.
I mean, there's so many different ways people can announce a potential conflict and, and basically be, not have to recuse themselves for things that do directly benefit them.
They have the choice, and I think they may have already reached out to the Ethics Commission for, for determination.
Not as of, yeah, yeah.
Not they can, because, I mean, whatever I say is not really binding on anybody.
As, as of Saturday, they hadn't done it.
That was my original, that's always my recommendation, because nothing I can say really protects anybody, so.
Well, good, great minds travel the same way, because that was my same recommendation, so we're good. Anyway, that's there, and the other, in that you were talking about basketball teams. After my meeting on Saturday morning, I was parked in the town hall parking lot, and as I walked in my car, which I've been saying I needed to wash for like all summer, the basketball team was there, and all I did was I pulled out of the parking space, got in line, they did a great job on the car. It looks, it's, it's been three months overdue to get washed, and it, it came out great, so that was wonderful. And then the only other thing I had, just to acknowledge the Registry of Deeds sending out these letters, I think it kind of came to you, seems I'm kind of sympathetic to the guy that he ought to have the CIO, but at any rate, it was received and read, and obviously he's still fighting the good fight. That's all I had.
Yep, I got the same letter.
Mm-hmm. With attachments?
Yes.
With attachments and the letters and all the rest of it, I think.
There's got to be an explanation, a backstory as to why the county commissioners aren't filling that position.
I, I suspect there is.
And, and since we are trying to get two and a half million dollars currently, we've decided to not get into the fray.
This is one we wouldn't necessarily get into. I, I do appreciate the Registry of Deeds. He is probably the hardest working person in one of those offices in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I hope it all works out in the end for everybody. Couple minor items for me. One is just, I think you all have gotten it by now, which is the draft housing production plan, which we're going to be discussing next Tuesday. I would encourage you both to read it, and to the extent you have questions that can be answered by Sarah or Jen Paulson, our consultant in advance of Tuesday, I think that would be helpful. It, it's updated from, obviously from what we did in 2016. It does follow the formula that. follow the formula that these things are supposed to follow, but obviously, any comments or input are welcome. It's due to be renewed in October, so we're up on our five-year renewal date, and it's a prerequisite to being able to continue to apply for annual safe harbor if we're able to, you know, produce the requisite number of SHI units, the next anniversary of that's coming up in May. So we have to have that in place. But again, to the extent there's a lot of detailed questions or comments, I'd encourage you to reach out to Sarah or Jen in advance of Tuesday.
Do we know what the red line version is from? Is it from our prior housing production plan?
I didn't look at the red line.
I haven't looked at the red line.
I saw that there was a red line attachment, I didn't see what it was against.
Oh, I just want to read the changes.
I will find out for you.
Yeah. Unless there's anything else, no comments from Zoom World, none from our guests today. How about a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
I know.
All in favor?
It's not even 935i. Don't feel like I earned my pay.
Thank you all.
We're done.